Yes, we went this past weekend. I'll provide an update.
We're just really having a school board meeting.
I make sure I'm done with work by 2:30 every day.
Okay, great. Okay, I'd like to call the Board meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A public comment will occur during the public comment portions of the meeting and will be done by raising your hand remotely or in person. Once acknowledged, please state your name and words so that it can be included in minutes and please limit your time to three minutes. Public comment is governed by policy V E D H. Are there any additions or deletions from the agenda?
No, not at this time.
Is there any correspondence?
None.
Okay, thank you. All right, we need a motion to approve the public minutes from October 9, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the public minutes and the public hearing minutes from October 9, 2024.
All right, can I get a second? Second from Mary. All right, are there any amendations to the minutes? Okay, no? All right, all those in favor? Kevin, are you in favor?
I'm abstaining.
Abstain, okay, perfect. All right, so that is, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 in favor, 1 abstention. Okay?
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes of October 9, 2024.
Thank you. And I get a second, second by Mary. Are there any additions or changes to those minutes? No?
I wasn't there, so it says I was, but.
Oh.
Sorry.
We will take that off. Thank you. All right. All right, all those in favor? Okay, most passes, so 7 and 1 abstention. Thank you. Okay, student report. So Nora is going to be out today, but she has shared a quick update for the board meeting. She says all spots for job sites and student volunteers the day of work on the 29th are fully filled, fully filled. The students are excited and it's shaping up to be another fantastic year for this event. And she asks you all to please reach out if you have any additional questions and she looks forward to the next meeting. Right, which brings us to, actually, we're going to do a public comment, let's get right over it. We'll open the floor for public comment. Is there any public comment in the room? No? Is there any public comment online?
No, there's no public comment online.
Okay, perfect, thank you. We'll open public comment back up at the end of the meeting. All right, brings us to the SAU Leadership Team update.
Good evening, I just have a very brief update for you folks tonight. First, we're going to be sending out some communications to our community members on the budget process. So be on the lookout for that by Friday. That will go through some of our budget numbers from previous years, some of the cost savings that we've done, and then laying out the timeline for this year's budget. Second, I'd like to make a proposal about posting of the agenda. As you know, or if you don't know, we post our school board agenda in the Valley News every time. It is a cost of about $375 to do that. I am suggesting that we do not post the Valley News. We will continue to post on our agenda and by law you have to do two other public places. One would be posting at the SAU and the other being wherever the meeting is being held, whether here or at one of the schools. By law, we do have to post in the newspaper for any public hearings for donations. We'll continue to do that and I would continue to post when we do our budget sessions and our deliberative sessions for transparency.
Have you thought about listing out Listserve potentially?
Listserve would be great, too. I'm just communicating with other local school districts. None of them do that Valley News component and most of them do that public places and local community chat, so Listserve could be added into there. Any questions about that?
I think my only concern would be, do we have any sense within our own community how many people might rely on the Valley News for that?
I'm not sure. If you, I don't know if you've seen the post in there, it really relates them right back to the agenda on, to the school board. It like able to say discussion, first read policies and things like that. So there's not tons of information on there.
Okay, so they're going to get a bulk of it?
They'd have, I think most likely they'd go to the website anyways to be able to find out the agenda documents and the backup information.
What does the city do?
The city, I think, posts on, within their building, too, so they have.
And they're not using the Valley News?
They use their, they have their newsletter that goes out every week. They post them their newsletter as well.
Do you think that Valley News will be able to financially recover?
We've made, we've hired someone for the administrative assistant for facilities. Tim, do you have an update when the candidate will start?
I do not.
All right.
Within two weeks, I think.
Within two weeks. And also, we have a finalist for the assistant to, assistant to the superintendent, which I'm excited about, so we're just going through reference checks in that process, so hopefully an update at our next meeting. And that concludes my update for tonight.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions for Amy? Okay, that takes us to the Business Administration update.
Good evening. Today, we're going to go over the Chapter 3. That was in the, in the materials. Basic Budgeting, Tuition Information and Cap Reserve Funds. So just a real, this is obviously a repeat for most of you and you'll see when you talk about budget next week, there's all these numbers associated with that. So I just, I think it's useful to just go over how school budgets are constructed in New Hampshire. They have all these different funds. It's a modified fund accounting. So it's not like our own checkbooks were basically all monies together, but rather we do journal entries and journaling in each different fund and there's a general fund. For us, there's a general fund, Food Service Fund, a Special Revenue Fund, and a Building Fund. The Building Fund, we hadn't used for a while, but we used it for the project that just ended. During the budget time, we talk about the General Fund. The General Fund is the one that affects your tax rate. The number that goes on the warrant will be all projected funds together. So food, I mean, we'll talk a little bit about it, but the Food Service Fund is funded by revenue from either the federal government or you paying lunch fees or money from the General Fund and you'll see that budgeted in the General Fund. The Grants or Special Revenue Fund, obviously, that comes from grant sources or those donations. That's part of that special revenue. So we smoosh all the funds together, but we'll spend, you know, 95% of our time talking about the General Fund or maybe 99% because that's where the sausage is made. On the next page, and you can have these for your reference as you're looking at things, everything's broken down into different functional areas. So what are we going to spend on regular ed, special ed, all the way down? So we try to break those down accordingly. And then within a function, there's major categories of object and level, so using pivot tables or whatever, you can break down pretty easily what you're spending on supplies, for example, across all funds or a certain function supplies or whatever it might be. So that allows you to sort of, you don't have to look at it at just a school level. I think, you want to look for page 18, I think? Is there anything?
That's the budget.
18 is the function list. Oh, 90, I'm sorry, I got my own stuff confused. Other revenue, so then there's revenue. So what you see in the, in the discussion for next week that we'll talk about in a second is just expenditure side. So obviously, the other part of the budget is the revenue, the projected revenue that comes in, that's not your taxes. So if you have a General Fund budget of $40 million and you see this year you have $14 million in different revenues, that means you got to raise the difference, 26 million in my example. So these are the different areas that I will be projecting revenue for. When you come to the final budget book that you'll get in November, there'll be a revenue page and then with a basis subtraction as to, as to what you would need to raise in local revenue. So for this year, for the 24, 25 year, the budget number is 14 million, 229 zeros or two. And so try to, we usually do a pretty good job of estimating revenue. Most of this stuff is relatively pretty well-known. Tuition varies a little bit, but with good predictions. You know, if you get $13 million, then it's an extra million dollars you got to raise out of taxes the next year. So it's important to be as close as you can be, or you guys will look bad and then you'll be mad at me and I'll look bad. Page 20, tuition information. This is how many kids we have in our school. This is through last, last school year from Grantham and Plainfield. You can see at the high school is 121 Grantham kids, 69 Grantham kids at the middle school and 66 Plainfield kids, grades 9 to 12. I'd just like to point out, and again, most of you know this already, but getting my soapbox a little bit, like a fully a third of the high school population comes from our area schools. So it's not, it's not insignificant for revenue. Didn't break it down there, but we get somewhere more than $4 million from, from the area agreement. So while we like to think that they benefit a lot from the area and they do, I think that Lebanon does as well.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
This is sort of unrelated, sort of related. How do Grantham and Plainfield students get to school?
They both run their own buses.
Okay.
They're responsible for getting their, their own kids there.
Okay, so we don't.
The Plainfield bus is not very populated, but they do run a bus.
But we don't do any busing for, for them? They provide their own transportation to get here?
Correct. And you'll see, I think one of these slides has other kid, yeah, kids from other schools. Everybody gets their own, their own kids to school.
Thank you.
The tuition rate for 2025, the year we're in, for the high school, this is area rate is 18,291, middle school is 19,093. There's, there's the totals paid for Grantham and Plainfield. So for the year that ended, Grantham paid 3.3 million and Plainfield paid 1.1 million. So the area tuition rate is, it's set by the area agreement. It's a pretty complicated spreadsheet. It spits out a number. So it's not, if I'm doing it right, it follows the formula pretty well, but the point is that it's not something that the board sets, really. It just gets calculated. I calculated this year's last week and gave it to the two schools. I don't remember what it was. I'll look at it again in a week or two to make sure I didn't miss anything major. I also asked those BAs to look at it, too, but I don't think they really do. Here's some other schools on page 22. One from Heartland, 24 from Cornish, and then a few others. So that varies. Cornish is pretty steady, but we'll get some random kids, which is kind of cool. There's a tuition agreement that we set out to the different schools slash parents, whoever's, whoever's in charge of paying the tuition. And there's a rate that that same area tuition, there's a, there's a non-area agreement rate that gets spit out. And that's what we use, but obviously, since it's non-area, that part, I guess, could be debated, but we've just been doing kind of follow-up pass practice on that. It's a little bit more than, it's like $1,000 more, something like that, than that area tuition. So.
So the ones at the top, because you say parent paid, so that means the Heartland, Cornish, Corrid and Plainfield are actually paid by those towns, too?
Correct.
Okay.
And Plainfield obviously is the middle school, so that must be some sort of hardship thing. It's, because Plainfield doesn't send their middle school kids here unless there's an arrangement that superintendents work out.
I have a question on 21, question 21. We met here on 20. In 2023, Plainfield had 67 kids, right?
Mm-hmm.
And 66 kids this year.
With the year that just ended.
Right, and in 2023, they paid more in tuition than they're paying in tuition now. They, a lot more, it looks like.
Yeah, that's weird.
So, yeah.
Do we charge for special education, significant special education?
No, we do not. I'll, I can get together with Shay Lee and make sure that we got the numbers right, so. No, we don't, with area, we don't charge for special ed stuff, so. Good catch. I'll check into that. I'd be interested to know what the story on that is. Page 23, Cap Reserve Funds. This is as of June 30. The Building Fund has $656,000 in it and there's 600 grand that I need to add this fall from the year that just ended. So we'll have with two, with $2 signs, 1.2 million. You see the Special Ed Reserve Fund has 1.5. I tried to note, well, they said, at last year's budget time, we, we wanted to reduce, we wanted to increase our revenue by $250,000 by taking it out of the Cap Reserve Fund. The DRA wouldn't let us do it that way. So what we did is reduce the budget by 250 and the intent is to have a special, I mean, a public hearing sometime this year to act as a special ed reserve fund to take $250,000 out. But I would say, I thought we were going to, like, I was thinking we'd just do it right off the bat in September, but I think it's probably wiser to see that the expenditures are actually where we thought they were going to be. Since we have the ability to do it anytime during the year, what if we don't need it? That's even better, you know? So just know that the idea was that we were going, we might need to add $250,000 to this year's budget by taking that out of the Special Ed Cap Reserve Fund. And then there's two other funds that have been set up in the past that we've never accessed. The Emergency Management Fund had 50 grand when the old budget, UCS, 53,000, so we made 3,000. And we've made $20,000 in a tech fund who was set up at $200,000. So those funds, tech fund, they have very specific meanings, so you can't just buy computers out of it. I think it has to do with like emergency server repair or something. I'd have to look at the language. But it's good to know it's there. Now, I think, you know, they preach at these business administration trainings, like you got to make sure you're really general in how you set it up. And I don't think it's bad, but I think it refers to hardware. I'd have to check. But that's when you set up a building fund, I should just say, like, building and repairs is what they advise, so.
I'd be interested, like, as we get closer to kind of our November meeting, the language on those two funds and when the last time we accessed them.
They've never been accessed. But I get the language, absolutely. About the budget, the meetings are basically Monday and I think there's one on Tuesday. I set up today, you probably already saw it, but I set up today a Google Drive folder that hopefully I have given you access to the materials that we'll be talking about next week. Right now, all that's in there is sort of a, well, I, usually I don't, we don't usually give those out early, but I gave out early that there's a long narrative when people input their narrative into the computer, that's in there. And the point of that is the narrative. So you want to know, like, why is there a trillion dollars in a supply line? Hopefully, you'll see some, some words there. And then there's a, a big listing of whatever school you're in charge of, and then I have a summary sheet to what the budget looks like right now. And I just say this to get it on the record, I guess, that the budget is, this is step two of a working document. So numbers in there will change. I can tell you that we've, people have changed their insurances since I put the numbers in there. We hired somebody at a different rate than we thought. So there'll be some changes between now and the November meeting. But, you know, nothing super crazy. It's not like it's going to be a double. But I don't want anybody to look at that number and say, that particular number, why did that change? You know, especially personnel stuff will probably fluctuate a little bit. And then you guys will say, yeah, you're not adding that, so take that out. So those are the kind of changes that you'll see between now and November.
Will we also get the administrators' summary, like their narrative?
So if they have a narrative ready, I asked them to put it in there. This is a cha, you know, to defend administrators, you can, you know, sling stuff at me if you want, but this is a change a little bit, so we have not asked them in the past to have their narrative ready for this meeting. So I don't, I don't know that they're all ready. For the meeting next week. Yeah, so if they've made, I've seen several sort of drafts. So I asked them today to slide it in there in their Google Drive, but if there's not one in there, it's probably because they just haven't got it together yet, so.
One question slash comment. The CIP that the board has talked about and stated as a priority for the board, et cetera, that the Finance and Facilities Committee has been, you know, primarily Tom, Tom, Tim and John have been working on, and we've seen year one of that, that is included.
Yes.
So the items from the CIP for year one were working on like a five-year CIP, but right now, we do have year one. That has been already discussed with the schools and the administrators and the FNF sort of committee members. Those items are in these proposed budgets. And I would just remind the board that part of the process we're trying to get going with establishing the CIP and having it be a regularly reviewed process and having it be part of this is that when those items go into the budget and the board has seen the CIP and it's a document we use, those, I think, were, for the CIP to be a useful document, that should be looked at not as a, like, really great target for cutting because that is part of a much longer CIP process that the board is, I mean, this is the first year that we're doing it this way, so this is going to be a little bit weird, I think, but I just want to remind everybody that, like, what we're trying to get to is a place where the CIP is sort of a thing that we've all looked at and said we feel pretty good about, and then it sort of just gets put into the budgets and it's not as much up for, like.
Remind me, have we, the budget as a whole, have we seen year one? I mean, the board as a whole, have we seen year one or has only FNF seen year one?
That's a good question.
I don't, I don't think it's come here. I was planning on putting it in the budget.
Yeah, I think we, I think we saw, yeah, I don't think it's come.
So before, so we, we need to have the whole, the whole board see it because FNF can't act on it?
Totally.
So we need to have all of us see it before we, like, look at it as, okay, this is an infallible, like, we're not moving these things out?
Yeah, and I think I wanted to bring it up partly just because I know that this is the first year that we're doing it this way, so we're going to be, and we haven't, like, the the committee members have been working on upcoming years because ideally, this needs to be a longer-term document. But because of budget season and lack of administrative support, et cetera, we've, we haven't made it much further than year one at this point. We're looking to get to year two, but so I think going forward, it will, this will be a document that the board will all, will have seen, will be familiar with, et cetera. But the point of that is that it is something that the administration and the district can sort of rely on, that we, the board, have looked at, understand the importance of it, et cetera. So it's not saying that we can't decide to do whatever we're going to do, but I would urge the board to consider that as a strategic priority, that is how we coordinate the administrators, the staff, the schools and ourselves is by having that document, so.
Right, I agree. I think that's, that's great. I think that we might have a little bit of slippage this particular time because that hasn't been, hasn't come to the full board yet, so we'll see it in.
Next week.
I mean, I think we can, yeah, do we, you won't see it next week because we'll only be the individual meeting, so you'll see what's in your.
Right, you, next week, if you look, this is actually something that Steve did last year. We broke out sort of the big projects. So there's a separate line in each school now that says Mount Middle School projects, for example.
Right.
And in the notes, the notes I told you that you have, you'll see CIP this and CIP, and John has good notes as to what is from the CIP in the building you're in. So next week, you won't, you'll see your school.
Should we, I, should we think about putting CIP year one into these Google folders so that the board can?
All we'll be able to do is see it and we won't be able to take any action on it, right?
I know, but I, but I think that, like, in terms of sharing it, do we feel?
I can slide it into each folder, that's fine, but it's, yeah, it's not, you're right, it's not been approved by the board.
And nobody else has seen it, so I'm not sure enough, right? So I would, I would say, yeah, go ahead and put it in.
And we, we haven't been, like, holding it back. It's, we sort of just, we, like, just got to the point where it was at, like, a sharing point, so I think.
Just, just as like a procedural thing.
And that was why I wanted to bring it up tonight.
I think if, if it's easy, I mean, part of the, the reason we have it in the format that we have it is so that we can pull those narratives out pretty easily. So I wonder if in the, in, for each building, if we just have the narrative pages that go.
Shouldn't the whole thing be shared, though? Because I feel like the beginning has a narrative also that we, I feel like has to be, like, should be included so that people understand.
I think, though, with the building level conversations, it's most important to understand why these projects are in the budget when we have these initial conversations at the building level. I mean, I guess we can err on the side of more information and then you all, in our individual meeting company, can decide what we're talking about. If we've got all of the information, right, if I'm, if I'm at, like, Hanover Street's meeting and I've got all the information, but I see Hanover Street's, I'm assuming the narrative is part of the document, then I'm going to be focusing on that.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I feel like having everybody see, like, I'm not sure what the disadvantage would be at this point to, like, starting to share it this way.
I would prefer, if you want all the narratives, I'd prefer to share the whole thing with every, with any, otherwise, I got to break it apart.
Yeah, it's meant to be, I think it's meant to be, the way it's been formatted, the way it's been put together, it's meant to be seen as a sort of, like, whole district thing, and I think that it makes more sense as a whole document. I think we're ready to share the year one. Knowing that, like, this is, I feel like everybody has to put on their sort of, like, hey, this is our first round of this, this is going to be everybody's first time seeing it, like, there's plenty of.
And I would just say, again, just as adults, and the reason why I shared just your building with you is that these, these meetings can't be a full discussion about the whole district when you're supposed to be talking about Hanover Street because we'll never get out of there. So like, if you're a Hanover Street rep, you got to be focused on Hanover Street discussions as much as you can, please. Otherwise, we might as well just do the Saturday meeting.
We can all day, talk about all things. So this is our first chance, just our buildings or whatever.
Thank you. Hopefully, you find that useful.
Yeah, thank you. Um, is that it?
That's all I have here.
Okay, all right, moves on to the D E C I A update. Karen? That's you.
Hi there. I just have a brief update for you. The update is about the fifth grade departmentalization proposal that was brought forth at your last meeting. So after careful consideration, while we see the potential benefits of this approach, we've decided to set aside the proposal for now. Implementing a mid-year change would present some challenges, and it could be disruptive to students and to teachers, but most importantly, to student learning experiences. So instead, we think it's essential to approach the, to approach the transition thoughtfully and as part of the comprehensive scheduling work that's being undertaken right now by the new Scheduling Committee at LMS. That committee includes parents, faculty, and teachers, and we have facilitation provided by demonstrated success, and they're bringing research and experience with middle school scheduling. So we're excited about that work. They met for the first time this past week. This approach will allow us to create a smooth and well-prepared adjustment for our students and our staff, ensuring the best outcomes for all. So we'll continue to work towards this new schedule with the committee, and Tom and I, in the meantime, have met with the fifth grade team, and we're focused on supporting them with the current model for this year. Does anyone have any questions about that part of my update?
One, I have one question.
Sure.
Will Tom kind of be sharing with the middle school, kind of, the progress of that work over the course?
So we were talking about that in our initial meeting. I think you, the school, rather, faculty, can expect regular updates, but planned updates. So I think there'll be shorter, briefer updates each time that committee meets, and then there'll be dedicated times for those committee members to bring back input opportunities to the faculty. So they'll get rather regular updates and then some opportunities for deeper input as well. Anybody else? Great, my only other update is to just let you know that we have our District-Wide In-Service Day next week on Friday, November 1st. It's proving popular to have that day occur right after Halloween, both with families and with staff. So we're looking forward to an opportunity for all of our schools, faculty, to hear from our Take Flight Kids and Teachers, which is exciting, so they'll get a chance to peek at that really in-depth Project-Based Learning Initiative, and then also hear from the team of teachers and educators that attended Project PBL World, or Project-Based Learning World, last June, to hear what, sort of, to continue to build these exciting interdisciplinary and project-based initiatives in our district. And then there'll also be a lot of time for district-wide meetings, department and team meetings, as needed throughout the day, in collaboration regarding both professional learning initiatives and curricular initiatives. So we have an exciting day of hard work planned. That's it for me for now. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, moving on to unfinished business. We have discussion and action on the first reading of Policy JLDBB that we moved from last week, Suicide Prevention Plan, and action on the Suicide Prevention Plan itself.
So I'll make a motion to move Policy JLDBB to a second reading.
Okay? Okay, second by Richard, and a motion by Wendy. Any additional discussion about that policy, or concerns?
Do we need the 2021 date under C? Page two? Very bottom, under the annual staff training. Should we just say?
Should, should it?
We'll just ensure.
Yep.
Do you have another one just now?
Just one.
All right, great, all those in favor? Great, yes, thank you. And then that brings us to discussion action on the Suicide Prevention Plan, which we talked about last week.
So I'll make a motion to approve the SAU 88 Suicide Prevention and Response Plan.
Okay, thank you. It's a motion by Wendy, second by Tia. Any additional, they did put in all of the revisions that we asked for last week, last meeting, so it's just a, it's a go.
So I just have a question on that. On page, I guess it's 31 in our packet, when it, this starts with intervention, and then it says, when a student is considered at risk, about the, one, two, three, four, fifth bullet down, it says, when the parent and guardian arrives at school, they are asked to sign the Permission to Release Information Form, blah, blah, blah. My question is, what happens if they refuse to sign the permission form? It doesn't really say what action we take, or...
Good question. Yes, Ben, please. Thank you.
The purpose of the release is so that they can share information with their mental health provider or medical professional, and if they don't provide us that information, then we don't have conversations about the child's mental health with the professional.
But we still have conversations within the school.
Yes, yes, internally, of course, yeah. Yeah, we just don't have, we're not privy to any outside providers. Yep.
Any other comments on, or questions on this plan? No? Okay, great, so, all those in favor? Great, okay, thank you. All right, then, we'll need a quick update from our NHSBA Delegate Assembly Representatives. How's it go?
All right, oh, let me put this closer to my face. All right, Richard, you can correct or add in if I forgot anything. I figured I'd just go through a list of how the votes went. So Resolution 13 and 20 were merged into one resolution, and the alternative language provided by the NHSBA passed. You don't need me to read them, right? That would take a long time.
Tell us what the topic was, 'cause we're...
What was the topic?
If you have, can you know the topic?
Um, yeah, that was the one submitted by Hanover and Dresden School Boards and Oyster River regarding student participation in sports. All right, Resolution 14 died. Item 15 was not a resolution, so no vote occurred. Resolutions 16, 18, and 24 passed with the alternative language provided by the NHSBA. And I can read you what those were about really quick, if I can find them. So advocating for universal free lunch. And then 18, it's kind of... Equitable and Sustainable Tax Plan. And 24 is the last one, so let me find it really quick. Supporting legislation which prioritizes the well-being and safety of students, and while recognizing the rights of parents to make decisions about their children also gives due consideration and weight to education, to educators' professional judgment and their responsibility under the Code of Ethics. So it's Student Privacy Resolution. Resolution 17 was struck down after the amended language struck the last sentence, because federal laws already supersede state law, creating redundancy, so it was just struck down. Resolution 19 was no longer deemed moot, and that was regarding, which one was that?
I don't have the list on there.
Which one was it, like, I, 'cause I remember we had a conversation about it. Okay, so, yes, so, I have actually the language that ended up being passed. They amended the language. So what ended up being passed was the NHSBA will advocate for minimum standards for public school approval, ED 306, that are consistent with the NHSBA Statement of Beliefs Manual and Current Approved Continuing Resolutions. So that's regarding the minimum standards.
The reason why this one came back up again was because of the JL-CAR ruling, and so we did our best to represent the board's kind of opinions on the matter.
Yep. Resolution 21 passed as proposed and recommended by the NHSBA, which was consistent with how we had already voted as a board. Resolution 22 passed with the amended language. NHSBA will support legislation that requires the State of New Hampshire to fund the cost of the youth risk behavior study for all New Hampshire middle school students in the states and districts that wish to implement. And that's how they all went.
Great, thank you, thank you both. And the NHSBA, they, I think, just sent out the final Delegate Assembly language and documents, so it should be in there.
You can read through that if you want, then.
If you want, no more. All right, appreciate that. All right, does anybody have any questions for Tia or Richard? Nope, great. Okay, moving on to new business. So we have a discussion of a principal donation of $2,500. Do we have more information?
Sure, I'd like to thank Mr. and Mrs. Lightbody for a $2,500 donation to Levitton High School to be used for student needs at the discretion of Principal Smith.
Okay.
Because 25, I don't believe we need a vote, but I wanted to publicly thank them for their donation.
Okay, great, thank you. Thanks to Lightbodies, we appreciate that support. All right, then, item B, Suspension of Board Rules, Discussion and Action Policy JFAA.
Sure, so in your package, you have JFAA. JFAA. I'm asking for the suspension of rules to, to make these changes tonight. As you know, we do not have an executive assistant to the superintendent, who has been doing registrations at the district. We had conversations with our school partners, our principals, and our secretaries there, and they were going to be moved to do registrations at the school. We will continue to have registration opportunity in the summer at the SEU, when our, our administrative assistants at the schools that are off on vacation. So I am looking to be able to move forward with that, so we can continue to register students at the district.
So I'll make a motion to suspend our procedures related to policy adoption and adopt JFAA as written.
Second. My only question is, because this policy doesn't specifically say anything about the summer, we might just need to add a line to the second paragraph that, that says, if entering school during the summer, registration will be handled at the SEU, or something like that, just thinking of it as saying anything about the summer, so we should... Otherwise, it's fine.
So I guess, I have a statement that, I guess, I would like to see that, once this, if we approve this tonight, that it's clearly indicated on the website, because I think past practice has been, it's been confusing for parents, I think, where to register, and we've kind of flip-flopped over the years since I've been in the district, so it'd be nice just to have a quick little blurb on the website, pointing parents in the right direction.
Absolutely, and we're working with the City of Levitton to come up with a map, so it clearly delineates which elementary school you go to in the sending line, so they've been terrific about creating that for us.
And then my second is kind of a comment question on the last paragraph. It says, when residency changes occur during the school year, they have to provide proof of residency. My question is, who's kind of monitoring that, or is just that, just at the goodwill of the parent to actually say that they...
Yeah, at the goodwill of the parent. So oftentimes, I have parents reach out that they are moving from, let's say, Mount Leb to Hanover Street, and they're wishing to stay, so anytime a parent reaches out, we do verify registration at that point in time.
My question's about kind of the residency affidavit. What does that look like, and what does it ask for?
It's just a notarized statement that they, that they live at their said address, and they have to be, this has to be signed by that notary, after speaking with legal, and that was in our existing policy anyways, JFA. You know, if we had someone that had signed that and, you know, were not being truthful, we could take them to court, but he did note, it doesn't hold a lot of weight, but it is another, another tool we have to validate residency.
One more along that line, too, 'cause it says enrolling for the first time, they have to register at the school, so if I'm new to the district, I may not know what school I'm supposed to be registered to, so how does a parent find that out, where they...
Sure, that would be located on the website, but as I mentioned before, especially with our sending line, we have language that, that we have that kind of tells you which, where you go on Slaton Hill, which side of the road you're heading to, either Hanover Street or Mount Leb, but we are gonna work with the city to get a map for our website as well.
And who have you designated at the four schools to do this work?
Each school, I believe, at the high school, it is through their guidance, they're registering. Nikki is registering here, Jody is at Hanover Street, and Vicky is at Mount Leb. And we've provided additional training and support through our IT, as we have Almost Start, and online registration as well, so getting people up to speed on that.
All right, any other additional discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Make a motion to adopt the policy, or... These are first readings.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
There's a lot.
Where am I? So I make, like to make a motion to move the following policies to a second reading, listed under New Business 10C through I. And just a note on I, we combined two policies that were similar, it, it made more sense to have the language combined on one, so we gave it our own little A/B title.
So we have a motion by Wendy, and a second by Tia, thank you. Okay, so this is just moving on to second reading, any additional comments for anyone for any of these policies?
Why are we not including J through O, or O through J?
Those are all withdrawals.
Those are withdrawals, thanks, thank you, this one. I saw first reading.
They are first readings.
First reading is to withdraw.
All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, excellent.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to move the following policies to this, to a second reading, all to be withdrawn ultimately, so under New Business 10J through O.
And motion, can we get a second? A second, Richard? Okay, these are just withdrawn, so there's no discussion.
Can we just have a brief, Amy, 'cause some of them, are they withdrawn because there are other duplicate policies, or we just felt they didn't...
So, yeah, so some of them, there's been policies that have replaced them. The duties of the superintendent and duties of the principal, it literally was just the RSA, and so we didn't want policies hanging out, so we, I, we refer to those RSAs, or...
ED.
ED, yeah, in the new policy, so that you can refer there, but if language changed, then we'd have to remember to go back and change our policy, so we just felt it was better to refer to the statutes and stuff like that, and then...
And our minutes are here, too, with each of those policies, that talked about why we withdrew.
And then CHA and CHB, that we combined those.
Any other questions about these withdrawals? All right, all those in favor?
We had originally, Policy Committee had made a motion to move Policy DK for a first reading, because we thought we needed to add some language around activity funds and how we handle them after, but we asked Amy to ask Tim, 'cause Tim wasn't at that meeting to, about that language, and he gave us a very, very good feedback, that we didn't need to add that language because of the way that we handle things, and it's, the, the way that the policy was written was what the auditors prefer, so we'd like to just make a motion to just mark that policy reviewed.
That's number, that's P, letter P.
Yes, so Policy DK.
Okay, motion, can I get a second? Second by Tia. I just have a quick question, just like an informational question about that Policy DK. So, Tim, we have a treasurer?
Yes.
Okay, and...
She's, she's elected, that's part of it.
Oh, that's right, okay, so that's what I...
And we're actually working, it's been a finding on a deputy treasurer, and I'm optimistic we'll have one, so.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure.
Deputy Treasurer will be appointed by you, though.
Right. Right. Okay, any additional questions on this policy? So we're just marking this as reviewed.
As reviewed.
All those in favor? Great.
And then I'd like to make a motion to accept the reviewed policy report dated October 7, 2024.
Okay, motion to accept the review of policy report. Can I get a second? Second by Tia. Any questions? Anyone else? I just have some like grammatical stuff, but it doesn't change anything, so I'll just put that in there and fix it. But other than that, that was my only thing. Did you have a question? Anybody else? All right, all those in favor? Great. Excellent. All right, moving on to committee updates. FNF, we met on September 3rd. Our next meeting is October 28 at 4:30 PM at the SAU. Policy Committee, you met on October 7th. Do you have anything else to share besides...
We have two pretty big agendas coming up. We're going to work our way through it. We have the fall updates from the New Hampshire School Board Association. They also have extensive lists around, like what are the required policies? Which policies should we be looking at annually, biannually, you know, those kinds of things? Which ones have been withdrawn? So we've done a review of those lists, and we have started to map out the next couple of agendas. They're pretty full. So we anticipate having longer meetings or an additional meeting to get our way through those by March.
Spring update. By the spring update.
I just, I had one question about the Policy Committee, the minutes. Is it, I really like having them as part of the packet in this way. I think that's been really great. I was wondering, is it, would it be possible to reformat them with the items in the Information and Discussion section having their own line that is merged and centered so that it is read across rather than having a very, very long, like one column taking up multiple pages?
Is it... What a problem, if you want. This is the way it was formatted before I came in.
You can fix it any way you want.
Okay.
Go crazy.
Like to thank Tia for taking notes.
Want support or anything, like I think it's a pretty simple change. I just think it'll be easier to read, like, side to side and take up less paper.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Education Committee, we met on October 7th. I think we already talked about, yes. Our next meeting is November 4th at 4:15 PM at the SAU. PNN, met on, well, we've met many times. And the next meeting is November 7th at NYCHD. Do you want to say anything?
No, just we're progressing in the long continuum, as we should.
And we're going to have a quick non-public after this, and we'll get more information about that, just for everyone's information. Student Wellness Advisory Committee, met on October 4th. The next meeting is January 8th. Next meetings are January 8th and May 7th at the SAU office. Anything to say about that? I think we talked about it before, right?
Yeah.
Area Committee, met on October 15th. The next meeting is February 25th at LMS. The agenda for the area meeting is in your packet also. We talked about a whole bunch of things. They gave updates on their capital improvement, things that have changed. Their enrollments are down, both at Plainfield and at Grantham. They talked about their budgets, which they're facing similar increases in healthcare costs that we are facing. Plainfield is in talks right now with Cornish about having, about having a... They're going forward with their idea of having a shared middle school, so they're working on that and seeing if their towns are in favor of this. And...
A potential merger in their SAU.
Right, they're talking about a potential merger between Plainfield and Cornish's SAU. They share a lot of things already. They're talking about potentially sharing more. If they did that, they have, both schools have been very, both towns have been very clear that they don't want to change. Cornish wants to keep choice. Plainfield wants to stay in the area agreement. So there would have to be some fancy language in their merging documents to make that possible. But they feel confident that they could do that if they wanted to. So just, they'll keep us updated. Let's see. School District City Task Force, met on, next meeting is October 24th at 6:00 PM at City Hall. Housing Task Force, met on October 21st.
We met on October 21st. We had a zoning lecture and learned about plans by the city to change zoning in a novel way. There were a variety of things shared based on a study by a consultant hired by the city from Arkansas and the work that city employees have done as a result. Ideas that are being put forward to the city council are making what already exists downtown to be legal. For example, a home that was built on a smaller lot than required by zoning. Plans for changing how certain areas of the city are zoned, zoning changes themselves, and then the creation of some new zoning areas. These are all plans that are moving towards the city council and will be going to voters at various points. The city's clearly taking a growth standpoint with these measures, and a number of 4,200 new housing options could result. I asked if any New Hampshire municipalities have taken these approaches and what the results were. The response was that these were novel or innovative, never been done before ideas, and no one has done this before in our state. I then asked about the impact on our schools and if we are to grow as much as possible. There was some conversation about the schools and that we're conducting an enrollment study and that this work would need to be consistent or aligned moving forward so everyone understands how growth in housing might impact our buildings. So that was kind of the bulk of it. Our next meeting is November 11th, although I feel like that might get shifted because of the holiday, at 8:15 AM. And I emailed all this to Colonel, to include in the notes for you to read at your leisure. And, yeah, and our notes are also on the city website, so as one of the committees or, like the planning board, I guess. So there you go.
Great. Thanks. That's great. I mean, that's good. I think it's important, as you say, I think we do need to be aligned to be growing, especially if we're, the kinds of units matters for us in terms of our budget. Any additional questions about committee updates or comments on that? Okay. We're going to go back to public comment. Is there any public comment in the room?
No.
Any public comment online?
There is not.
Okay, so we'll close public comment. Future agenda items, board member recommendations or questions? Nope? Nope. Great. Okay, important dates and district announcements are, next week, we're having a school board meeting specifically on the strategic planning process on October 30th at 6:30 PM at the library upstairs. Our next regularly scheduled school board meeting is November 13th at 6:30 PM here. The annual budget meeting is November 23rd at 8:00 AM at the LMS Cafe here, also again. And our deliberative session is February 1st at 9:00 AM, also here. Is there any other business? No. So we will be having, as I said before, having a short non-public for two things. So one is C, for personnel. Okay? Do you want to do a motion to... We're excited on what we're going in under. We're definitely going under C.
Okay, I'll make a motion to enter non-public under NHRSA 91A 32C and K.
Okay, I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second, no.
Second by Richard. You have to do a roll call vote. Kevin?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Richard?
Yep.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim J?
Yes.
I'm a yes. John?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Tia?
Yes.
Okay, great.
So moved.
Okay, Richard, can I get second?
I'll second.
Second by MJ. All those in favor? Okay, I need to adjourn to 8:07.